So, my name is Denise Lustelow, Mayor of Clear Lake. And this evening at our council meeting, we discussed and did repeal the marijuana ordinance that was successfully referendum. And we gave clear direction to staff to bring back a new amendment to our current ordinance with some stiff guidelines so that we can continue looking forward to safety for our city. We also allocated funding for sidewalks, which is extremely exciting for our community because we don't have a lot of them. So anytime we can get more, and especially around a school or a public place, is extremely important. So that was really happy that we could do that this evening. And then the third thing, we have a police department that is now able to have a safe entrance in and out for their staff who have to respond to emergency situations without putting the public in jeopardy. Those were the three highlights of our event this evening, which was our city council meeting.
And what's the best part about the police infrastructure improvements?
Well, we will be, the best part is hopefully we don't, you know, have to run anybody over going out to get to those emergencies anymore and public safety to me. But also, we get to expand our records room and our evidence room. Evidence room, I believe, is the actual room that they're expanding, so.
And what's the impact on the budget?
The budget? It is nothing on our budget. That's the most exciting part. So we will now open the regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council and Redevelopment Successor Agency, Clear Lake City Hall Council Chamber, 14050 Olympic Drive, Clear Lake, California. Thursday, May 14th at 6:02 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sabatier.
Here.
Councilmember Pardok.
Here.
Councilmember Overton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon.
Present.
And Mayor Lustelow.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon, will you lead us in the pledge in a moment of silence, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
Moving on to adoption of the agenda. Ms. Lee, is there any modifications to tonight's agenda?
No, Madam Mayor, there are not.
Make a motion to accept.
One second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Overton.
Aye.
Councilmember Sabatier.
Aye.
Councilmember Pardok.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon.
Aye.
Mayor Lustelow.
Aye.
And I will turn this over, announcement of our actions from closed session to our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, there are no actions taken in closed session.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment this evening. Public comment, each speaker is tonight limited to two minutes. We're going to have two minutes per person and timed by our city clerk. And we have our first person, John Clements. He'd like to talk on police investigation, and he's got a few things here. So if he wants to come up.
Thank you. I've been dealing with situations for the police department now for 13 years. I received in the mail the other night a threat letter from a attorney, Jones Mayor, and it says, "My complaints logicically, the police department have become unfounded." Here's the problem with this. I have my possession right here, only eight complaints that have been filed, and your officers never have once contacted a single one of the 24 members that are with us as witnesses.
Can you look to us, please? You're addressing us.
Okay. Not one single witness that's been in any of these complaints, 24 people, and all of the other officials there has ever been contacted in a single complaint against the police department. Our police department talks to only its own officers and assumes that things are unfounded. So what we've got here is we have a Gestapo. We don't have an investigation going on. Whenever they're, these are considered unfounded and frivolous because they say it wasn't founded yet. An officer that was there, come on, an officer's got to cover up an officer, that's what they do, it's brotherhood. Amongst that, I have letters to Jamal Harris where I sent registered letters to our chief police to get answers to things over a year ago, but that's not happened. On March 28th of last year, I received a phone call, he said that there was a resolution for $3,000 for earrings of mine, that an officer was seen receiving by video, Lieutenant Sully, did not make it to jail. No resolutions come through, I have $3,000 out on earrings, and they just leave that, they keep continuing to shovel us away. The fact of the matter is, an officer took them, and I was told by Lieutenant Sully that I could not press charges against an officer for that. That is not true. Under the California Penal Code, you can just press charges against an officer, and I have mentioned this to the chief, and again, nothing's been done. This has turned into a matter where I am now getting harassed, my friends are getting harassed. Tim Sully stopped a Kelly Bassler the other night at the gas station, told me he knows he's a friend of mine, better watch it back. I have Tim Sully drive by my house every day, he lives right across the street, wants to mow. I have the police department come and kick my gate, go up and kick my screen while my MSY is sleeping, because they had a subpoena for her after volunteering policing got rude on the other side of her gate that says, "No trespassing under Fourth Amendment rights without written consent from the law."
New time, isn't it?
I challenge you guys to do something, because this man here is going to...
Our next public comment this evening is Bill Shields, would you like to talk on code enforcement?
I'm concerned about coding enforcement. Now, before, it was a total waste. People got their hands on red tags. In one case, they was actually trying to steal a lady's property. Now, who is going to be keeping an eye on all of this? Now, my suggestion is to set up a committee to keep an eye on what's going on. Because when people can get their hands on the red tags and try to steal people's property, that is totally wrong.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Two minutes for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Moving on to the consent agenda. Anybody from the council would like to pull an item?
Yes. Let me get to my notes here.
I'd like to pull item number... Hold on one second. Item number two, please.
Item number two.
And item number six, please.
Item number six. Very good. Is there anyone from the public that would like to pull an item?
I'm sure. Could you pull item number three, please?
Item number three, thank you. Moving to item number two. I'll take them in order.
Madam Mayor, in item number two, on the April 23rd minutes, it states that our closed session was going to continue at 6:00 PM, and there is no notes on the final action of the closed session. And if we can add no actionable report or no reportable action done at the final after the end of the meeting. Yeah, it says that it continues afterwards at 6:05 PM, but there's no continuation of as to when our final decision is in our closed session. No, it's the April 23rd, I believe, not the 6th.
Oh, okay, 23rd.
Yeah, right there. That is, closed session was continued at 6:00 PM, the end of the regular meeting, and at the end of the meeting, there is no notes to explain what was our final action. And I realize it's no reportable action, but just to conclude. Do you want to continue with item number six?
Or three, let's call it three.
We can go to number three.
Is it, yes?
So it's going to recommend that you take action on each item individually as soon as you can.
So may I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a consent agenda item number two.
Second.
With the amended changes.
And a roll call vote on item number two.
Councilmember Overton.
Aye.
Councilmember Sabatier.
Aye.
Councilmember Pardok.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon.
Aye.
Mayor Lustelow.
Aye.
So item number three was pulled by Mr. Dunlap.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am asked to have this removed from the consent agenda because I felt it was important for this body to explain to your constituents what's going on at LAPCO, what LAPCO is, how it functions, what its role is, and how important this particular meeting coming up next Wednesday in this building, in this room, at 9:30 in the morning is, because it will be the selection of the public representative to LAPCO for the next four years. And the people in this room, the people that you represent, may well be interested in who ends up being that public representative. So I ask for this to be removed so that there can be a discussion.
Very good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Overton, you are a member?
I can. Thank you. Okay, LAPCO is Lake local agency formation commission, and it has an opening for commissioner, and is providing notice for the city, for the Lake County citizens to serve as a public member. LAPCO is a district agency created by the state legislation to ensure that changes in government organizations occur in a manner which provides effectiveness, quality, services, and preserves open space and agricultural land resources. And you're right, this next meeting is really important. You know, LAPCO oversees a lot of things in our counties, it's not just for Clear Lake's representatives from the cities, the counties, and then we have public members that we hope get involved to help make sure that annexations such as, you know, cities extending their property lines, districts, water districts extending properties, their lines to incorporate, these are things that are handled all at the LAPCO level. So there are a lot of things that aren't controlled between the counties and the cities that are controlled with this, with LAPCO. So it's a very important membership, and, you know, we hope that, you know, everybody understands that there is public, we have representatives from the public that need to sit on this to, you know, help with their input. So, any other questions you have on that, or?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Again, just so that the public understands what LAPCO is, LAPCO is actually a state agency which is responsible for being the oversight, the eyes and ears of, if you will, of the state on all of the municipal agencies and special districts within a given county. In this case, the public representative would be representing all of the people of the state, of the county of Lake, whereas the city has a representative on the commission and an alternate. The county has two representatives and an alternate. Lakeport has a representative and an alternate. And the special districts have a representative and an alternate, and that rotates between the special districts. In this case, LAPCO is the oversight to make sure that your municipal organizations are doing what they're supposed to do. And that includes doing municipal, what's called municipal service reviews every five years, which is going on for the city of Clear Lake right now. It is not a done deal. And the public is going to have its opportunity for input on that in the very near future. And so it's really important, if you feel that there is something that your city needs to know about, or is not doing what it should be doing, and that that should be in municipal service review, LAPCO is the agency that does that, and LAPCO is the place that you should be next Wednesday morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I was about to bring up the MSR as well. I believe it's Wednesday in this room at 9:00 AM.
9:30.
9:30 AM, right here is the meeting for LAPCO. And just for everybody, the MSR is a comprehensive assessment of the ability of existing local government agencies to effectively and efficiently provide municipal services to residents and users, just to give you a brief summary of that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dunlap.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap.
And if anybody wants a copy of what's, if you don't have it, what's in our binder, you can go on our website and pick that up also. And LAPCO also has its own website that also has our report on there, too.
Lake LAPCO.
Yeah.
LakeLAPCO.org.
Right. With that, can I get a motion for item number three?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number three of the consent agenda.
Roll call vote on item number three, please.
Councilmember Pardok.
Aye.
Councilmember Sabatier.
Aye.
Councilmember Overton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon.
Aye.
Mayor Lustelow.
Aye.
Next item pulled was item number six.
And so my whole reason for pulling this item is not just so we can vote on it uniquely, but just because I want to remind everybody that one of our most important jobs in this position is to do the yearly fiscal budget. And the first meeting, we will have an overview of the budget on May 21st here in this room at 6:00 PM, with a more in-depth budget review on June 4th in this room at 6:00 PM. Please come, let your voices be heard, this is your money that we're spending, and we're trying to make sure that it's appropriated in the right way.
Thank you.
Make a motion to accept item six.
Second.
Roll call vote on item number six.
Councilmember Overton.
Aye.
Councilmember Sabatier.
Aye.
Councilmember Pardok.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon.
Aye.
Mayor Lustelow.
Aye.
And now, with that, everyone?
To approve the remaining items of one, four, and five on the consent agenda.
Second.
And a roll call vote on those items.
There are more. I didn't like the last one. And seven, eight, nine, eleven. Where does that all go from that mystery? I'll do four, eleven. So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote on those items.
Councilmember Overton.
Aye.
Councilmember Pardok.
Aye.
Councilmember Sabatier.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon.
Aye.
Mayor Lustelow.
Aye.
Moving on to item number 12, determination of council action with regard to qualified referendum and ordinance number 173-2015 pursuant to election code, section 9241. And I will turn this over to our city clerk.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, you have the staff report before you tonight in detail, so I'll give you an overview of the facts before the council tonight. On February 26th, the council adopted ordinance number 173-2015 banning the cultivation of medical marijuana. Pursuant to the elections code, no ordinance shall become effective until 30 days after the date of its final passage. If a petition protesting the adoption of an ordinance and circulated by any qualified registered voter of the city submitted within those 30 days, and the petition is signed by not less than 10% of the registered voters of the city, the effective date of the ordinance is suspended, and the council shall reconsider the ordinance. On March 26th, a referendum petition was presented and subsequently found to be sufficient by the registrar of voters. The council must either repeal the ordinance, or submit the ordinance to voters at the next regular municipal election, which takes place on November 8th, 2016, or order a special election not less than 88 days after the order. If the council chooses to submit the ordinance to the voters at a special election, the next general district election is scheduled to be held November 3rd, 2015. The council could choose to hold a special election on this date, or hold a standalone special election on another Tuesday with certain limitations. The ordinance then doesn't become effective until a majority of the voters vote in favor of it. If it receives a majority of vote, then it becomes a binding ordinance of the city. According to a very preliminary estimate by the registrar's office, a special election could cost the city up to $30,000. If the council chooses to repeal the ordinance, or if the majority of voters fail to vote in favor, the same ordinance could not be enacted again by the council for one year after the date of repeal or disapproval by the voters. So that's a general overview of the decision you have before you tonight. Either Ryan or myself can answer any questions you have.
Thank you. So with that, I will open item number 12 up to public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item this evening? Okay. Are you coming up to speak on this item, or?
I'm thinking of going.
Think quickly.
Hello? My name's Scott Nadel. I'm a voter in this town.
Hold on one minute. Two minutes, like I said at the beginning. Yes. One minute, please, so she can give her...
You guys got trounced pretty bad. More people voted against this than voted for any one of you.
Can you hold on one minute, please?
We're getting our timer ready.
Two minutes, just a second, so let me get it.
Okay.
How long do I have?
Two minutes.
Go ahead with two.
Now I'm going to reset it.
More people voted against this than voted for any one of you, and it's just going to lose again. So please don't waste our money. I think we've all had enough of this issue. Just let people have their medicine, and we don't have to get, you know, down and dirty, because it's going to get worse if you guys vote against this issue again. If you vote against poor people getting their medicine, it's going to be really hard for you, I promise. That's not a threat, it's a promise. Dave Hughes, and I hope I can do this in two minutes. I would like to encourage the council to rescind the ordinance. Between the cost of a special election and the cost of the soup that's working, that I think would go away, if you rescind the ordinance, we'd probably save the city $50,000 to $75,000. A special election, if you decide to have a special election, people that are upset most vote most. I remember in this city having a recall election where a council member was recalled during a special election and reelected during a general election. So I think if it was a general election, like November 2016, I would feel more confident that the No Grow Ordinance would prevail. I think we have more important problems, I would like to see this council rescind the ordinance and do an emergency amendment to our existing ordinance. I had a meeting, an ad hoc committee meeting, of two dispensary owners, two pro growers, two growers of medicinal marijuana, myself, another business person that's kind of middle of the road. Unanimously, everybody at that meeting agreed limit to an emergency ordinance, limited to six plants across the board. Everybody in the meeting agreed to that. And beef up enforcement. You had hearings here during the No Grow Ordinance. Everybody mentioned the crime and the illegal grows, and even the pro growers let something done about the illegal grows. So let's, I think tonight, you have the grounds to do an emergency ordinance, people are already growing. I saw a police report, just a notation, 100 plants being grown somewhere in the avenues. I had a listing, almost lost the deal because 38 plants were planted on the other side of the fence.
Thank you.
If you decide to rescind it, I would like to come back with some more suggestions. Thank you.
As you know, we worked really hard to get the signatures needed to pass this referendum. We feel very confident, if it goes to a vote, that we will also win that. That being said, I support 100% what Mr. Hughes just said, and feel that it is a very balanced and compromising approach that we all need to take for the benefit of the community, to begin healing with our community, and to start allowing people to have their medicine, but also enforcing the people who are breaking the laws blatantly. We just cannot tolerate that anymore. It gives everybody that does grow their medicine a bad name, it causes a lot of discrimination and prejudice, and I think that the city has to take the stand with law enforcement and take these guys out. We support 100% an ad hoc committee, and I hope it's a well-balanced group, and I look forward to see what happens next.
For the record, Mike Dunlap, I hate to be a stick in the mud, but I would like to suggest that, Madam Mayor, you make sure that people stick to the subject which is on the agenda, and not be discussing an emergency ordinance which is not on the agenda, so you can't do it tonight anyway. That would have to be a justice. I believe there are true individuals.
My name is Ron Strobridge, and I'd just like to ask the council, knowing what a workload it is for you to try and do things in your everyday lives, I would request that you consider establishing some kind of committee or some people that consist you to get, actually sit down and study and look at these things, what has worked places before, and also perhaps maybe get a little bit better feeling as to why there's so much turmoil over this. Other meeting, I asked you not to start a war, and the war started, it's going to cost us all money, no matter what we do. If we could get some advanced research and so forth, instead of just mediocre reactions to things, it might work out a hell of a lot better for us.
Anyone else on the side of this? Do you know one standing up? If you do want to speak, go ahead and come up so that we can expedite things this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, I'm Kerry Monfrance, former mayor of the city of San Marino, resident of Lake County. And I would like to speak on this. We're having a war on a plant. A plant which was the result of a propaganda effort by many industries to eradicate, to bring death and destruction upon millions and millions of people with their own poison in some medicine. We're having a war on the medicine. And we have to look at the facts of what this does, how it can be controlled, and how it can become the new green growth industry of America. can become the new green growth industry of America, if we only think about where we're going. It should be regulated, yes. It shouldn't have major impacts on the neighbors, but it should be legalized. If it wasn't for hemp during World War II, our navy, literally, would have been sunk. Hemp was required to be grown by the colonial fathers of this country. You know this. You studied your history. You know what the Constitution was written on. It was written on hemp paper. We've all seen it. You may not have all read the document, but we've all seen it, and the interesting color, because it was written on hemp paper. Hemp has been part of this society for a long time. The Bureau of Indian Affairs recently decriminalized and allowed the Indians to use marijuana, because it has been part of their medicinal practices for thousands of years. We don't know what aspirin does. We just know it was discovered. It works. It's a miracle drug. We don't know what marijuana drugs, what does, because it's a miracle drug in many ways, and the federal government does not allow us to remove it from Schedule I, so it can be investigated. It could be the cure for the cancer which is killing your loved one. We have to remove this false thing against marijuana. It is crazy. It is a propaganda effort, going back to hemp. Even the chemistry industry is involved in this. How many minutes did I have? I'm sorry, I didn't know your policy. My first time here, I've just arrived. Thank you very much for your attention.
And if anyone else is going to speak, I would really like to, as I've been pointed out to as well, keep it on the agenda item, please. Not to...
Hi, everybody. I'm a patient, colon surgery, tumors removed, survived. Basically, I just want to say thank you to everybody for voting and winning. Second, I wanted to say everybody, register your friends, so that we can continue to win. And then to you guys, we won. Thank you. Hi.
Hello.
We did win, and we were five votes ahead of what we needed, but somebody in the committee that Dave Hughes was speaking about made a very poignant point, and that was, we had Whether they were all valid or not, this was 1,300-plus people in a very small community that stood up and said, "We're not doing this anymore. We want teeth in the ordinance." Whatever that takes, I know you can make that decision now, but when you are making the decision whether to rescind or put it on the special election, understand that we had over 1,300 signatures. That's important. Thank you.
See, no one else? Okay. You're going to need to move up close to the front, so you can activate.
I just want to know what to do with the car tail mount. I'm stuck with them, and I have video documentation of it. I have a total understanding that there's absolute ordinance on it, and I got babies, and they're close by.
Seeing no one else, I will quote public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Who wants to open it up, anyone? I see pens dropped over here.
All right, I'll open the topic. There were 1,217 signatures on the petition, 635 of which qualified, five more than what was needed to qualify at 630. So we are addressing this referendum at this point. There's a lot to consider, and I think that, for me, pulling back on the ordinance and rethinking it makes a lot of sense for many different reasons, including a lot of what we heard in public comment, that it will take care of some existing litigation, it will decrease some expense that we have, that we can foresee. I mean, $30,000 is a lot of money to gamble with, and I usually don't take those kind of gambles twice. We used it up on Measure H, so... That's sort of where I'm...
Councilmember Swatney?
I think it's similar to what councilmember Fortina Dixon just said. I think we took a gamble already. I think we kind of expected that these were things that might be in the works. We knew there was a referendum already filled out, ready to go, when we were talking about this on February 26th. We knew there was the threats of lawsuits, and now we're faced with both of them as we speak. We took the gamble, and we're right where the crystal ball kind of told us we could potentially be...I'd hate to see us take another gamble, especially since this is a gamble times two. Even if we win the special election, we still have to face another litigation. And at that point, that's potentially $30,000, plus potentially another $20,000, $30,000, depending on how far that litigation goes. I think we have the chance to find that balance. Again, I'm going to give you the numbers for Measure N, approximately 52% to 53% of the voters in Clear Lake voted against the restricted ban in the county of Lake, while 48% to 47% voted for it. It's very even on that, on this type of situation. For us to vote 100% grow anything, or zero grow anything, is only making one side of our population happy. I think we need to figure out how we're going to, kind of like the ad hoc committee, figure out what it is that we can find that can make everybody maybe not as happy, but still happy enough that they can live with it. I think that there's the potential for finding middle ground here, and figuring out maybe a better option this year. Unfortunately, we're in a timeframe where we're going to be lucky if we can do something to save this year, and I hope that we can, because we do not want the large grows here. We want that something we all agree on, and still agree on, is the large grows need to go, and the unfortunate thing here is that the large grows are still here.
Again, just for the record, submitted to the registrar of voters was 1,217 signatures on a referendum. 635 were determined to be valid. 582 of those were found not to be valid. There's many issues on the table here. It isn't just about patients and patients' rights. There are people whose lives in this town have been impacted, and as a member of this council, public safety, the safety of our seniors, the safety of our kids, also matter. I sat patiently and listened while folks spoke, and I'd appreciate the same courtesy. We have a struggling economy in this city. We have people who are looking at us. They might want to invest in our city to start a business. We have a regional shopping center that's in our future. I think it's very important that, again, we offer them a safe city that is inviting for business. I think it's important that we offer a safe city that's inviting to new employees, not just for standard commercial businesses, but also for our schools, for our public safety. We like people to invest and stay here in our town. Now, with that said, I'm also taking notice, and I paid attention while we were going through this process. And having watched city council meetings before I decided to take the chance to sit up here, I heard two people come forward and speak to the dais who were patients. They explained that they received enough material from two plants to satisfy their medical needs. What I saw and what I heard, as I listened to testimony, a lot of folks are making a lot of money off of the material. So while I recognize that, and I recognize that there is a great amount of money can be made, we need to have governance in this city, and I am open to meet, and we've had consideration of who to sit on an ad hoc committee, and I would throw my name in that hat, I would like to work through this. I think we can reach a compromise, because the city simply can't afford a $30,000 special election or future litigations. We need to move forward, but with that said, I still have my eye on what can we do to start an economic growth in our city? What can we do to get this engine going? We need jobs, and we need good viable businesses here. And so with that said, I'll throw my name in the hat as far as what we can do to move forward, if it is the decision of this council to remove the ordinance that was passed in February. Thank you.
We would hate for you not to speak. Basically, I just want to reiterate exactly what Russ Perdok, Mr. Perdok is the senator. You know, we don't want the large grows. That's our main problem. I think we all know that there are medical people who need it medically. I don't think any of our attempt was to take that medicine away, but it just has gotten so out of hand, I think we all just kind of went to the desperate stage. So I do like the ad hoc committee also, and thank you, Russ, for volunteering to do that, because I think you'd be the perfect person to...
No.
Oh, yeah. First off, it would probably be two, and it's always good to have, you know, even people you don't like. We all don't sit on committees and boards that we love everybody on those boards and committees. You have to learn to work with everybody, and please be considerate, as we were considerate when you came up here, and this is one of the problems that tells me that some of you people aren't in here with medical needs, you know, because you don't have the respect to let us speak when we want to speak. We listen to you, please listen to us. We're sitting here trying to figure out what to do for our community. You guys are not the only ones in our community. We have 15,000 people that we need to make sure are...we're trying to find a compromise here. So we're willing to sit here and talk about that. So, but we also have businesses that want to come in, and we need to make sure that there's safety for our kids, that our schools are secure, and that people can live in their homes comfortably, and we, you know, people have rights that don't smoke just as much as people that do that want to smoke it. So, you know, we're up here trying to make a compromise here, so please be respectful of us as much as we were of you. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
I concur with councilmember Perdok about the ad hoc committee to review what exactly is right and what will work for all facets of our community, our law enforcement, our police officers, and our residents that live here. And I, as well, would like to throw my hat in that committee to work with you, Mr. Perdok.
I think one of the important things that we need to look at and remember, that what we did here was important, because we sent a clear, strong message to everyone outside of our community who was coming here to utilize our resources for their own personal profit, that that's not acceptable here. And we, as the council, are willing to do whatever we have to do to protect all of our citizens. And so we're at a point now to where that message has been sent, and we, as the citizens of this community, need to now take a step and take a stand and say, hey, they're compromising, we're all compromising together, which means that everyone follows through with the compromise that has been come about, based on committees or the final decision what's the best way to move forward. But we all have to stand behind those compromises, otherwise it's pointless to compromise. So we are here to say we're going to do whatever we need to do to protect this whole entire city. That is why you elected us, and that is why I spend my personal, private, unpaid time to sit up here and to spend the time that I do outside of these meetings, because I love this community, and I want us all to enjoy what it has to offer. So I'm here, sitting here, saying, I'm...in no way do I...am I questioning the route, the route we took to get here. Absolutely, I would not have changed my vote in the past. Now we're at a point where I need to make a decision on what to do in the future. I'm ready to do that, and I'm ready to stand behind whatever that is we decide to do. And I hope that everyone else is as well, so that we can actually do this together. Because if we aren't all on board with whatever it is, even if we don't like 100% every single piece and compromise that has happened, it won't be successful, and that'll be our own fault. So that's what I'd like to put out there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't want to rehash a lot of the things that came up in those meetings, but I would like to remind, prior to being elected to this council, I sat on a fireboard, and I am concerned that if we don't come together as a community, we have people who spoke tonight in favor of allowing growing, who don't live in our community. They have an interest, I think, in this, but I'm asking that everyone who lives within the city of Clear Lake need to come together and work together in it as a community. When I was running for this office, I met with the proponents and authors of Measures O and P, and I asked them, when we are dealing with huge grows, cartel grows, as you mentioned, we've got kids, let's face it, when you're putting attack dogs into your grow to protect it, and they get out of the fences, and our children can't ride or play, ride their bikes or play in their neighborhoods, when latchkey kids' parents are scared to death about what's happening, particularly in the fall months, in their neighborhoods, because there are tried-by shootings and people seen with weapons, and on and on. I asked, can you help us? Will you help us to identify these folks who are stealing water from our fire hydrants and lessening the effectiveness of our public safety personnel at our fire department that are impacting the time spent by our law enforcement on illegal grows? And I was told, no. I was told, no, that's not our place, that's your place, if you're elected from City Hall. And that is how it works, folks. There are just a few, a handful of people that work here. It takes a community, and that's what I'm asking for. We need to come together as a community if we want to live in a safe neighborhood, if we want to live outside of the influence of these cartels. So whether you grow, or whether you're, you know, standing still in a zero grow, we need to make a tough decision, not just here tonight, but in the future. And regardless of that, we need to come together as a community, and I ask for all of you to do that. Thank you.
All right. We're not seeing anyone else's pen up, so I'll talk now, I guess. Everybody said it, just like usual. Do I want to spend any more money that the city doesn't have? No, of course I don't. That was never the intention. Do I want litigation? No, that was never the intention. Again, the intentions were to make a safe community for each and every one of us, our families, you, your families, our staff, their families, and make this a better place for people that want to come in and live. That was the only intention. But here we are then, so...
Madam Mayor, I...how did that go? I would like to consider repealing ordinance number 173-2015 and create an ad hoc committee to further research what is needed in this community that will work for this community and our city.
Can those two things go together?
Before, I think what we do is take action first on the ordinance, and really the next agenda item under 13, if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, you can add it in there. Okay.
And I don't...I think, I understand the word considers in there, but I think you want to...
Repeal. I'd like to make a motion to repeal ordinance number 173-2015.
To continue business.
Councilmember Overton.
Aye.
Councilmember Sabatier.
Aye.
Councilmember Perdok.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino-Dixon.
Aye.
And Mayor Listel.
Aye.
Number 13.
Thank you for your support.
Discussion and determine... Excuse me?
Can I ask you a question?
What, not right now.
Almost.
We're almost there. Next item. Next item. Item number 13 is the discussion to determine if there is direction to staff on existing regulations based on termination on the qualified referendum. So I will turn this over to our city manager. And city attorney, sorry. I want to do the key effort over there.
I think I will have our city attorney make most of the comments. As indicated, this is the time, based upon your action on the previous item, to determine whether or not there is specific direction to staff to proceed with action on the ad hoc committee that you've identified, dealing with the existing ordinance. We need specific direction to be able to come back at the next council meeting. With that, I'll turn it to our city.
Yeah, I mean, this item is difficult to agendize because it was determined what happened in the previous agenda item, so not knowing how the council's going to vote, now that we know the ordinance has been repealed, the council has certain options with regard to the existing ordinance. We cannot take action on anything tonight because it's not agendized for a new ordinance, we don't have an agenda to take action to amend it in any way, but this is the opportunity to hear from council, to give staff direction, do they want to change it in some capacity? Because currently, with that ordinance repealed, the existing ordinance that was on the books is the law today in City of Clearlake. What, because of that repeal, though, you are banned from instituting a new ordinance, which would be the same ordinance that was repealed, which makes sense, for at least one year. But it doesn't preclude the council from amending the ordinance in some way, provided it doesn't get close to that ban or close to what was the subject of that referendum. So we'd like to get some direction from the council as how you'd like staff to proceed with coming back to the next meeting.
I'm a little worried about our timing, and so too many changes, I think, may put us again against the wall. I would like to see the ordinance unchanged and take all the fines and eradication clause from the ordinance we just repealed, and put them right into our old ordinance. That way, we have more teeth to enforce, eradicate, and add more fines to the six to 48 plants, with the expectation, hopefully, that we can do an ad hoc committee, or maybe we can look over that number of plants. But I think if we change the number of plants currently, somebody may complain saying, I could have done 12 on my one acre lot, and now I'm told I can only do six. I think if we touch too much, we have the potential to lose again everything for this season compared to leaving it as is and just adding a lot of teeth to it.
I think we need to add a whole bunch of teeth to this thing, too. Shark-sized teeth. Not kitty-sized teeth. And I also agree that with, as far as timeframe, sometimes committees can take a significant amount of time to come up with a recommendation. I would like for the council to take an action, and then a committee to continue, because I think some of the, some of what we failed to do in the past is continue on a regular basis to continue to look at this issue. And so then we weren't making changes, I think, as quickly as we could have, and maybe should have, to react to what was really going on in the community. To wait a whole year to look at it again is too long. So I would like to continue to look at this as sort of a working document.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question of the city attorney. If the ad hoc committee is the direction the council takes, what's the soonest timeframe we could set a meeting? Is there a timeframe?
Well, the ad hoc committee, committee can meet as soon as they want to. With regard to us, we have our next regular agendized meeting, we could call a special meeting, but you can't pass an ordinance.
Understood. Simply for the ad hoc, if the mayor appoints, when could we schedule that first meeting? Because I agree, time is of the essence, and we would need to bring back something that could be agendized, hopefully, very quickly.
I believe they could meet immediately.
So maybe as soon as, as soon as tomorrow, or first part of next week?
That's what I'm asking. Can we make an appointment tonight? Can the mayor make that appointment tonight?
That is not, there's not a specific agenda item to create an ad hoc committee. What I think you could do is informally, maybe nominate members who could start those discussions, and then at the next meeting, you would officially appoint people to an ad hoc committee. It's a hit to stall any progress or discussion, because, because we could formally appoint people. I just think that they wouldn't be, wouldn't be a formal ad hoc committee at this point.
Well, obviously, more than, more than two would be violations, so we need to...
Madam Mayor?
We're not going to go again.
We're coming again.
What's your point of order?
As a former parliamentarian, I would like to challenge the vice chair of attorney just to give you, you cannot take an action other than give direction to staff based upon this agenda item. That's all you can do.
That's exactly what he is.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to hear from the public. Does the public have any comment on item number 13? And if you do, please come up, and again, it's two minutes. Formal line. Formal line, if you do have comments on this item, please, so that we can move swiftly.
Honesty, I've spoken before, but I thought that last year...
Excuse me, sorry, I just want them to be quiet so we can hear you.
Is the microphone on, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Anyway, in the previous meetings, I said that I thought that last year, there was something that had at least been worked on. I didn't fully understand all the situation between the police department, between civil and illegal or whatever, but I would suggest to you that last year's ordinance, although far from ideal, at least gave you tools to take action to the big rows and so forth. And I don't understand why the police department says that they're not responsible if there's somebody growing 100 and something plants in their little backyard or something like that. So it seems to me that the first thing you could do to save time and get to actually working towards spreading out some big ground here, is find out what it takes to get the police department to go after all those big, illegal, dangerous grows that we're all concerned about, and not worry so much about how you're going to regulate, how you're going to regulate everybody for now. If you've got something, you can work with it at least beginning of the month. In the meantime, we can get a committee and so forth going, and look towards the total future of the city, the county, the commerce that will take place here and so forth. Because among other things, there's a whole lot of commerce that will come here if in 2016 we get recreational stuff done. So if the city can think about how they can gain from that, the county should be thinking about that also. We've never had a viable industry in this county since the county began. This is the first one that could actually be gained on if people would take a look at it and start to work with it properly.
Vince Metzger, Severina, Teaks, your local, I'd like to volunteer for the ad hoc committee, actually. I'm very objective. I don't smoke, I just look at this as a civil rights thing, and also as an economic development thing, and also from the will of people to express themselves, of course, with, and I think I'd be a good contribution to the committee.
Thank you.
So I think you're headed in the right direction, and it makes me extremely excited. But I don't necessarily agree with the B structures, because I feel that people do stupid things, and the way the fines are set up, you could end up, a person could end up losing their mobile home or whatever just from doing stupid things. And I know that everybody says that, doesn't matter, but I think it does, and I'd like to see them scaled down somewhat, maybe $500 a plant as opposed to 1,000. Still be enough of an impact, but not enough to so quickly take someone's home away if they did something dumb. Everybody does it. And that is, is main thing, and enforcement. I want to know why, if a group of plants is over 100 plants, why aren't we calling the feds? This is DEA. I don't understand why you guys are involved in calling cops. That's what they're supposed to do. We need to put that in there, that there has to be that. Also, Lake County Mediations is willing to come and advocate for any neighbors who are having a conflict, they will offer free mediation services. And I think that should be the first step in any ordinance, that you offer the mediation first, and then take it to zoning or whatever after that. That would create a lot more community in our community, and our neighbors would start talking to each other. So there's a lot of ways to do this, and I'm, you know, glad to see that we're heading in the right way, it looks like, and I would just say, more power to everybody.
My name is William Strano. I've been a resident here for 15 years. What I want to know is, is how many citizen, non-citizen will be on this committee? Is that a number for that?
We don't know anything about that.
I mean, is there any plan, any puts regular Joe citizens on?
Most of the time, there is a public member at large.
I think that'd be the fairest way to get any decent input from everybody, if not just to have you guys there. Also, the big issue is law enforcement. I mean, we need to, we really do, and I understand that nobody wants to call anybody in and be the one to call, but they have many points, you know? We do need to clean that up, but it is just a big growth. We can have all the issues we want in this town, if people have a statute limit, six plants, whatever, it'd be fine. It's a big growth I could talk about, so, I mean, I think we really need to work on how we're going to enforce to take care of this issue, other than just the police say it's a civil matter. Thank you, Madam.
Number one, in order to make any plan go, you have to implement rules, and you have to enforce the rules. The problem with this city is, they make rules all the time, but they do not enforce them. So in turn, you say, oh, why are people taking advantage of this ordinance? It's very simple, because they can, because you allow it. Now, you have to get some enforcement, but I've been telling city councils before you. And until you do that, you will never get a handle on these marijuana grows. And two, I would like to volunteer for your ad hoc committee.
This is to speak about the plant count. I live and breathe farming, from black to white, red, Asian, red, the whole nine, like, anybody's homeowner, I do it. When it comes to the six-plant count, there is a leverage when you're a farmer. Is it worth it to go all balls out, or follow the rules? So when you go to six, there's only six plants, that's barely enough medication for a sincere patient of consumption to consume, or a very united process, depending after they cash, oils, edibles, things of that nature, even if you have to choose it, that takes a long way. So before you guys make your absolute decision in this interesting ad hoc committee, I want you guys to understand that, if you say six, they'll go 100, because you're going to eradicate the grow anyway. So if you go all the way in, there's going to be the consequence. If you meet them at 12, that gives you enough time to create what's needed for your medication, and you have a diversity in your plants that you can address multiple medical needs. But if you only give them six, I just kind of Twittered it like, "Don't make a decision on that." Just reconsider the six, because six will make the majority of farmers out of their salary and more money to help for. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, city council, I just want to tell you I'm proud of you for your decision-making tonight, because I'm a patient and I need my marijuana. Last time I spoke to you, I explained to you my health issues, but I forgot to tell you that when I smoke marijuana, I don't get high, I get a burst of energy. I fought hepatitis C, I had bad liver for many, many years, probably 30, and I beat that disease through the chemotherapy, but it just stole my energy. Six plants gets me through a season, not only smoking it, eating it, we make sad from it. My muscles and my legs, I've had seven joint replacements, I hurt. But I'm going to respect your decisions on your grow amount, and I'm going to honor it, and I'm going to thank you for it, because it is the beginning. We have to start somewhere, but I'm hoping that you'll still consider the six, because truly, most of us need that much to make it through a season. So I respect your decision, God bless you, and thank you.
I knew there was a 13, but there was nothing in the book out there. I would hate to see much time wasted with an ad hoc committee for the immediate needs. And to me, the immediate needs are, as suggested by this committee that I put together, six plants across the board, period, in the conversation, no doubt. I understand your concern, Councilmember Sabatier, about people that might be growing 12, maybe you could throw in an appeal process for someone that's growing more than six on a larger parcel, for some kind of topic consideration, but at least through this year. An ad hoc committee, to me, should be formed to move forward. What we need is immediate teeth in what we have. I still don't believe six plants should be grown on a residential lot, at least outdoors, but it's what we have, and it's what we need to deal with, and I can support as long as we get enforcement. The committee suggested $100 per plant per day. The people that are in illegal, that have too many plants, have an opportunity to eradicate them on their own. If they don't, that's their problem. And at least that's my understanding, they'd have like a 10-day period to eradicate the plants that are illegal themselves. And if they don't feel like doing that, $100 a plant per day was suggested by the committee, and that comes from the $100 per occurrence, I guess, in our current ordinance. So I would encourage, I'd like to think there's a way we can do an emergency amendment to do some immediate things, and ad hoc committee could certainly move forward to further refine and make it better, but with the growing that's already going on, we need the eradication, we need the teeth in the ordinance to do some enforcement. So I would encourage you to do that immediately, if you have a decision tonight, I would encourage you.
One last minute, is okay? I just quickly wanted to comment that, first of all, Colorado has had an increase in jobs, they've had an increase in the money for their schools, for their roads. Their employment has gone up 600% since legalization, and California is headed towards legalization in 2015, 16, excuse me, actually, November. We have two different initiatives on the November ballot for California to legalize cannabis. Right now, it's six plants per person California state law, so you guys, by at least sticking to the six, are allowing the one-person standard via California state law. But if there's two people in the house, you have serious medical, serious, serious cancers, where they need to eat it, make the oil, six is not enough for two patients. And I just want to say that, for now, I think that we should at least, if there's two patients in the house, allow for the 12, follow California state law. Six is great, and I appreciate it, and that'd be wonderful. I personally have been too afraid to do it myself, because of all the crazy... I personally have been too afraid to do it myself, because of all the craziness within your rules, but if you guys can standardize this, I'd be very content and very happy. But I do have to just say that, for the patients that have cancer, that need to eat the oil, they do need to have six per patient, as California state law requires. And then I just wanted to, again, stipulate that it is coming, 2016 will be the year for California to have legal cannabis. Thank you.
Again, for the record, Mike, I would like to suggest that you do exactly what's in the agenda, you make recommendations to staff. One of the recommendations I think you ought to make to staff is to contact the fire department, and talk to them about increasing the fine for stealing water out of the hydrant, give that man sitting over there another tool to work with, because that's where some of the water's coming from. It's not coming straight out of the lake, it's coming out of the lake after it's been treated, you know? Do away with that. I'm not a big fan of the concept of profiling. On the other hand, I've seen an awful lot of pickup trucks in Lake County in the last eight or nine months, with 250-gallon water tanks in the back. Now, to me, there's not a lot of houses that need a 250-gallon water tank in the bathroom pick, you know? So, maybe our police department ought to be authorized to do a little profiling. These are recommendations you can make to your staff, according to the agenda. In terms of bringing back, you know, you can make a recommendation to them to bring back a rec, something to you for next Thursday night, to say, you know, for together committee, bring a plan, how many people on the committee? How is it going to be comprised? How many people are going to be from businesses? How many people are going to be from council? Is the police department going to be involved? Is the fire department going to be involved? How many members of the public? That's a plan that you can bring back and put on the agenda, have a discussion on. Right now, you're just letting everybody throw out wild ideas, you know? And you have something that you're supposed to do, make recommendations to staff.
Marie Weathers, and I'm a citizen of Clear Lake, and I'd like to say thank you to the council for making a bad situation better. Everybody knows that I'm strongly against marijuana being grown, but this is something I can live with. Six plants per parcel, because the parcels are 50 by 100, and you don't use it, and you don't want to smell it, you don't want 12 plants, or 18 plants, 24 plants grown next to you. I manage a mobile phone park, we have a zero grow policy in my mobile phone park, so it is possible to do it. But, since we've opted to grow the other way, 12 plants should be sufficient. Thank you.
Peter, well, City Council, I was one of the people that sat on the little committee that we had with Dave Hughes and some others, and it seemed like consensus there was that six plants is sufficient for medical needs. But what I wanted to do was also mention to you something that we did talk about, but also as important is that, not only the teeth, like we spoke about, how important it is to get everybody involved, find out what's going to work to keep this under control, keep the big rows out of here, but also size, keep plant sizes down within that ordinance there, to where the six don't become gigantic, where they're not hovering above fences. I think there's something in there already about, they have to be out of sight, so make sure that the teeth are there for that, to keep them, the fences down where they're supposed to be, keep plants down where they're supposed to be, so that we can all live together, this will work for everybody.
Good evening, everyone. Pete Shipman, for the record. I'm not going to address any issues that you didn't talk to here. I can't remember what it was, gentlemen, we had the opportunity, you led us to meet my wife, myself, and a disventry owner. At that time, I believe my wife forwarded some information to you regarding the medical benefits. And I think before anyone makes any decisions, either in the head of the committee or appear on the council, I think those, I don't know if you distributed those norms to everyone? If you did not read them, I suggest you read them. If you did read them, I suggest you reread them again, and truly understand the medical impact the cannabis plant does have on people. Every patient has a different need. Cannabis produces a different product, or a specific cure for those individual needs. I've told you before, those who know me, I'm now taking what they call the RSO. I take it once a day, my seizures are minimized. Sometimes, almost eliminated, not quite. The point is, though, if you become more knowledgeable about the health benefits of this, it may impact the decision on how many plants you may or may not allow individuals. I realize size of lots and all that good stuff has to come into effect, I truly completely understand that. But understanding medicinal use, and what product yields are necessary for an individual to receive their medicine, I think is just as important as the size of lots. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I must close public comment, and bring it back to the council for us to do now, as the agenda goes, give direction to staff. Councilmember Overton?
Hey. I'd like to thank everybody for their comments, I appreciate it. As you notice, we stay very quietly, there's talks, so please do the same for us. I believe, I think our recommendation, I think the six plants for any, you know, any residents, and it must be, or residents, I think is sufficient for now. We'll be working, just remember, we're going to have a committee, hopefully, and be working on this, but we need to do something now. And I do like that we put the teeth in, and I'm sorry if everybody thinks that $1,000 is too much, I do not think. If you're growing illegally, you have 10 days to remove it. So if you can't remove it in 10 days, tells me, you deserved the $1,000 per plant per day. So, I think we need to put the teeth in, because I think we need to make sure that people know that, they're coming in here, doing this in our town, they're going to be paying for it one way or the other, because if we have to go, and we have to eradicate, and we have to do all this best time to our police officers, and you know what, I'm tired of all these people who come into our community and do illegal things, and we have to pay for our police department to go and take care of it, we shouldn't be paying for that, let these people pay for it. So, I think the $1,000 is just enough, because if you're growing illegally, you don't have to worry about it. If you grow too many plants, you'll get a notice stating to remove them, you have plenty of time to take care of business without getting that fine. If you go to the point where you get the fine, you know, you should be taking care of business. So, you know, and I think that would be a good way, you know, for us to get started, it gives us some teeth, gives our, you know, the ratification, gives our police departments some teeth, it gives our code enforcement some teeth. I think we should go with the maximum of five-feet fences, or six feet tall. I've noticed that, you know, they go six feet, you're seeing it from the road. You know, we do not want our children seeing this stuff. You know, it's great for medications, I'm not, I'm anything against that, but, you know, we need these kids to not be, happen to know that everybody is doing this in our town. So I think a five-foot grow, and I know that plants can get very big, if you only have six, so you can have plenty. The less plants you have, the more space you have, the bigger the plants are, anyway. So I think that will be plenty, I think will give us a good start, and then, you know, the direction to bring back, you know, for an ad hoc committee at the next meeting also. So that's my opinion on how to get this started, and then continue on with keeping the meeting going, because remember, we can always bring back them at any given time.
So, for me, for direction for today, I'd like to see language from the ordinance we just revealed reutilized into the, what is now the existing ordinance. We have a tree ordinance, which has a very, very useful fine structure, that's working very well for when people cut down trees. It also talks about the overhang, and the amount of space that a tree is taking up as one of the ways of measuring whether it's a tree that would be looked at under the ordinance. Is that something that we could do here? I forget what they called it exactly, like, plant, thank you.
Well, yeah, I don't know what they, what I have seen is a height limit. You can say a certain height, I don't know what that would be, but in terms of a canopy and circumference, I think it's a little more difficult to enforce, but certainly, it's your ordinance, we can adopt, or we can make it work however you want, but I would think a height limit is probably the most, is the easiest to enforce.
Okay. And that's what we're looking for here, at least in my opinion. I think we should put out something very quickly, right now, that is very clear-cut, very easy to enforce, so that we can get to work immediately doing that, while the committee is continuing to hone what will work for a long term. So, definitely a flat number, because we were instructed previously by legal that the easiest way to enforce something is that there's just a flat number across the board. My concern is that many of the lots within the city limits are 50 by 100 lots, they are very small. And so, whenever you're doing pretty much anything in your backyard, it is infringing on your neighbor. We have to take that into consideration somehow. When people are talking about farming, that's in agriculturally zoned land, that is not something that's happening in residential areas. There's no farming. I can't imagine trying to grow 100 tomato plants. I can't imagine trying to grow 50 tomato plants. Six tomato plants start to produce so many tomatoes, that I can't give them away fast enough. Maybe I'm just that good. I don't know. But, so, the thing is, it becomes cumbersome when you are within a very small area, and it's largely populated. That is what agriculturally zoned land is for. So, to try and look at anything more than six, which I still think is a lot, would be too much for me at this point. I think we need a flat number, we need a height limit, we need an anonymous tip line where people can call in and not be concerned about getting their names, so that we can be in partnership here. Hey, this address, check it out, and that's all you have to leave, so that we don't have to, so that people don't have to put themselves out there, if we're asking people to be in partnership with us.
Please, we can hear rumbling out there, and it's really hard, we're trying to listen to each other, so that we can get this done for all of you. So please, if the rumbling could not happen in the audience, so that we can continue and understand what we're all trying to get to here.
Yeah, so anyways, I would like to put away, if people are afraid to say anything, people are afraid to have conflict with their neighbors, or to have the cartel upset with them, I don't blame them, but the fact of the matter is, my face is out there, so I have no problem with them knowing my name there, you know? But, other people don't. And so, for them to have the ability, I can't count to you how many people have said, "Hey, Gina, will you call and tell them about this address, blah, blah, blah," without using my name. It's happening already, it's just that it would be a lot more streamlined and much more quickly, if they could skip me as the middleman, because I'm a little dippy. So, if we had some way that they could anonymously let us know where to start to direct our efforts, because the fact of the matter is, hundreds of plants are being grown out of sight of many of the public, and I probably don't drive by them all. So, you know, to make it easier for people to partner up with us, I think we need an anonymous tip line to be set up right away. And for the ad hoc committee, and should we decide to appoint that, which I think would be a great idea, I'd like to see, as someone suggested, professionals who are dealing with the different, with the different problems that have arisen around these large rows, be on that committee, like a fire department person, PD, someone representing the water agencies, as well as people at large, community members at large on the committee. And that's what I have for now.
I wanted to go off of what Councilmember Overton had said about the height limit right here, and reading the ordinance right now that we're looking to amend. And it says, "All outdoor cultivation areas shall be screened with solid wood fencing from public view." And I would suspect that if we can take a picture that shows anything popping above a fence, that that is enough evidence to ask that person to chop their plants down to the right size, and if, again, they don't comply, then at that point, eradication slash fines go into effect. So I don't think we need to change that wording, because again, I'd like to caution our group here, that when we have this new ordinance amended, it will not be until the middle of June. The middle of June is knee-deep within the season, and we've already had an experience in Lake County, where an emergency ordinance has had an injunction to put it on hold due to the changes on the investments that people had already made into their season. I don't personally like the way the ordinance is written, but I also don't want us to be at risk on being against, again, put in a position of not being able to do anything. So I think the less we change, the better off we are, other than, we have to put the fines in there, we have to put the teeth there, else what's the purpose of going back to this old news? I'm looking right here, the limits are six for anything less than half an acre, 12 for anything less than an acre, 18 for anything less than five acres, so we're looking at maximum of 12 on like 90% of our properties, if not more, because those are typical properties in all of Clear Lake. I think that if we don't touch the numbers just for this season, create an ad hoc committee to review those numbers, review the rules, review the policy, review the fines, review everything, which I agree, I think our police department needs to be involved, code enforcement needs to be involved, fire department needs to be involved, the public, a couple of individuals, public at large, a couple of individuals from the businesses. I would say a team of seven would be a good number for this ad hoc committee. But I think that if we change too much in the ordinance that we're looking to amend, we face another risk that we don't want to be, again, facing. So I would suggest, again, that we do not change the stipulations of the amendment of the ordinance, but change solely the fine eradication clause, the lack of an eradication clause, and other consequences for not following this law.
I disagree with you on that one, I'm sorry, Graham, because a lot of those are still very closely than an acre, right here in town, still, I'd say we should just go with the six, it's easy, it's simple, and we don't have to go out there and measure whether they have an acre, or quarter acre, or whatever, we just take a six, it's just so much simpler. And I think that's the way we should go, and put the teeth in it, and make it happen. I'm fine with what ladies have, you read there on that tree ordinance, that's fine, because I just wonder if, because some of these fences are a little more than six feet, so, and I know the total force can't be everywhere on that fence, so I just thought if we made it, you know, the maximum, out of view with a maximum of about five feet, would maybe be, make it a little stronger.
And I agree that there are a lot of eight-foot fences out there, and I'm really hoping that with our additional code enforcement officers, that we will either have those eight-foot fences taken down, or that we will get paid the, the correct amount for the allowance of an eight foot, since legally, we are allowed to have eight feet, as long as we pay for the variance, and/or receive a variance from the city to have an eight-foot fence, as long as those rules are followed, and as long as it is out of the public view from people walking the streets, driving the streets. Again, this is something we can change with an ad hoc committee, but I think the less we change right now, the safer we are. And if the team chooses to go with six, I will agree with six, I'm just making sure caution is there.
I hear you. And in response to that, my thinking is that, the more clear-cut and unambiguo it is, where our enforcement officers are not having to make judgment calls, because out of the public view, to me, who's five foot four, is one thing, to someone who's six foot four, is something totally different. So, someone who's six foot four, walking by on the sidewalk, or the not the sidewalk, could see a plant over a six-foot fence, whereas I wouldn't. So, I don't want to put them in a position to where they're making judgment calls, I want them to be able to say, tape measure, doesn't go past that, great, tape measure, does go past that, okay, here's what we need to do. So that's what, I'm trying to give them the tools to make very clear definitive decisions that can be, that can be beyond question.
Well, I think we're here, staff's listening to the conversation, and it sounds like you're arriving at consensus for us to come back with an amended ordinance, as we said earlier, it appears to me that this As I said, it appears to me that the six plants regardless of the size is something that council wants, and then with the eradication and with the fine, pull from the previous order.
I believe that.
I'm asking if that's...
Yes, I am. I mean, I want some very heavy fines, and I know that people do stupid things, and there's one real quick way to stop doing stupid things, to pay the consequence, honestly. And for some people, if it's not enough of a consequence, I think you may mention this, it won't stop them from doing it. To let me go to someone who's growing 100 plants and say, "Give me $100, your fine." They're going to laugh and have me $300, say, "Here's for the next two times you come." You know? So unless it's huge, it's hugely impactful to their pocketbook, it's not going to deter them. But I really think that we need to be extremely aggressive under that matter, as far as fines. And maybe I'm the mean one, but...
I'll be mean right along with you on that, because I do think fines need to be quite stiff, because I believe the whole city has this issue on their mind now. And I believe we all know and are going to pay attention to what gets put into place here. And if they don't know it after that, then there's the fines, because we're all quite aware of it at this point. And I do think six plants completely maximum per parcel. And I'd like your height limit.
Was there a height limit that the council agreed on?
I see with a maximum of five feet.
And I completely agree, five feet.
Excuse me, excuse me. We're...
We're about to comment.
Interesting point. The Brown Act...
Drive which public comments, please.
The Brown Act keeps us from being able to take public input after we close public comments.
Yes, keep that in mind. We're... Excuse me. Can't do it. But I have to... I just want to... I totally understand what you're saying about not too much, but the sliding scale, we were cautioned already by legal that that was going, you know, that was going to be hard. So it's much better and easier if it's just straight across the board. So we were kind of cautioned that, you know, by legal on that.
And you know that's where I would love to end up, is across the board. Again, it was just caution.
So do you have enough time?
I feel like we've got clear direction on that, and I think there was also a direction to come back with the agenda regarding the ad hoc committee. We could appoint that next week.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I do not. I'm not done. Councilmember Perdak.
With regard to the ad hoc, it sounds as though we've got consensus and directions been given to staff. Perhaps we could meet, not so much as an immediate, which I was first thinking, and I concur with the seventh member, but maybe we could meet, because we need to come to consensus with our community and with the folks in public safety for what may be in the future, maybe pre-November 2016. So maybe I like... Well, no, I like... I'm rescinding that as far as an urgency. Perhaps Councilmember Sabatier and I can work out that, and I would encourage people here this evening, or if you're out in TV land, you're interested, we could ask that they submit a name and a contact if you're interested in participating in that ad hoc, or to just to know when we'll date to, when we'll be meeting. So I'll withdraw that. It sounds like council has given direction, and I think that's fantastic. Thank you.
So with that, moving on to item number 14. I think maybe we should take... Want to take a five-minute break?
Sure.
Moving on to item number 14 on the agenda. Request for consideration to adopt resolution number 2015-11, authorization of award bid for an auxiliary employee entrance and expansion of evidence storage room to RNC construction in the amount of $43,800. I will turn this over to... I was going to say, Chief?
Please.
It's in the corner?
I can take it.
Okay, any taken or somebody?
Yes.
Lieutenant Nelly. So if you guys want to take it out.
Well, that's going to cost you some more, but I'll give the report. If there's any direct questions, he's the one that is...
Come forward, please.
This funding is through AB 109, which is the state funding that was given to municipalities. It's a lump sum of money that is given to the city of Lakeport and the city of Clear Lake to try to offset some of the negative effects of AB 109. The funding that we've used previously has been used for special enforcement sweeps, the cross-training of one of our K-9 units, additional training, the transport van that you see in the parking lot was previously the public works van that was bought to transport inmates for public works crews. Unfortunately, that program kind of tethered off because of the increase in the type of prisoners that were out housed in the local jails. So we purchased that van and now have done an outfit of it, or in the process. Actually, the outfit is supposed to be...
I received the call today, and the equipment is in route. It's been shipped. It should be there Monday.
What is before you, the seeking, is to use some of this money. It does not affect the general fund or property. This is earmarked just between the two municipalities. The agreement is that the city of Lakeport is the financing officer of this, and it was just because they got the short straw when we drew, we didn't want to put anything more on Christ. It's an auxiliary entrance. It'll be on the far side of the building with the intention of expanding our evidence storage space as well. Because of the increase in these cases, we're having to hold evidence for a longer period of time until it's adjudicated, and we're physically running out of space. By doing that, then we also have an auxiliary door, because we only have one being entrance in and out of the police department, which is through the main lobby, which is problematic because when we have people sitting in the lobby and we're responding to emergency calls, there has been incidents where the public and the police personnel have come into contact for the safety of everybody that will take our emergency vehicles that are on duty will be parked on the far side, so they're not going into the parking lot as well, and then the emergency personnel can go out to side. If you have any additional questions, I'm more than happy to give it to Lieutenant Sullivan.
Lieutenant Sullivan, have anything else to add?
I think the chief pretty well covered it. I provided some information in the staff reports, some photos, and so on. The photos of our front lobby where it shows a line of people, that was 9:30 in the morning, where it shows those folks. We've had on occasion where we've had to respond to emergency calls, since that is our only exit and entrance, pretty much. We've had to wade through some of those people. Unfortunately, there's no windows on our doors, and sometimes they've been hit by doors and things like that on accident. We would like to avoid that, and we think that we can add security as well to our facility because oftentimes officers have walked in, there's been a lobby full of people, and sometimes they've been on calls for service, and people are frustrated because they have to wait and those sort of things, and then try to follow us into the police department. With all the things happening across the nation now, we need to be conscious of our department's security as well. So I think this will enhance that, and we'd be happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Thank you. Councilmember Perdak?
Thank you. Looking at the photos you submitted, and aware, I'm aware of the security cameras that you have, would you be able to set one there so prior to opening or dispatch might have an idea if anybody back there loitering?
Yes, yes, that is the plan. We plan on putting a monitor above the door so that the officers that are going out the entrance, they can see, you know, for, God forbid, anybody there waiting and applying wait for the officers or anything like that. Our camera equipment currently handles the cameras that we do have around the building, so there won't be an added camera, but at least there will be one trained on that section.
Very good. Nice presentation, of course. Lots of photos, good stuff. Does the public have any comment on this item? Okay, seeing that, I'll take it back.
I definitely think that this is a necessary thing. One entrance for everyone is... I can't imagine why there isn't a problem every day.
There would be.
Yeah, with how many people come in and out of that little room. So to me, I think this is much needed and necessary, but...
I was just going to reiterate what you had said, or I was going to say first, but she was still in front. It makes sense to create two entrances. Often, in many businesses, there's a staff-only entrance, and so I think this affords that as well as some more safety. And anytime that we can do upgrades that are necessary on somebody else's dollar, I am so happy with that.
Okay, so Councilmember Overton?
I agree, this is long overdue. One of the questions I have, though, that I notice is one of the problems, because I've been in the building trying to take care of some business when there's been a police coming out trying to go to a call, other people standing in the lobby, it is a nightmare. I think part of the nightmare, though, also exists from where the door is in that lobby. It needs to be moved down away from the window, because when you're at the window, people are coming in. I mean, is there any funding for that to happen at any given point? Because that's, to me, is a huge problem.
As far as this project goes, we had this additional funding, like the chief addressed, we've used it for special enforcement and other things. We kind of put our heads together and said, "We need to beef up our security," and this is one of the ways. The door, I would agree, is in a problematic spot, to say the least. I think that with this project, I don't believe there's funding for that at this time, but that is absolutely something that we can look at in the future.
Is there a way that we might be able to get a bid on something like that, just to see what it would cost? I mean, I'm curious, because I think that is, with this money, that would have been one of the things I think would have been moved and hopefully, you know, and everything else all clues to go. I mean, I think this entrance is definitely needed, but I also think that door is essential to be moved. I think it's been a danger for somebody standing at the counter, if somebody comes in mad, we get some really radical... I've been in there once, some radical people have showed up, and it's scary for the person who's standing there at that counter, and they're walking in the door, hysterical, screaming, hollering, and you're kind of there, you're stuck in between. You have no place to go, you have no place to go because the police door's locked, and the person's coming in. The only entrance is there at night because the other door's locked. So I just think that that's also something that we need to really start looking at, since we're rough the issue of safety. That is, to me, one of the really bad public safeties that I see for our public is going to be, so just want to go, otherwise this is really going to... Thank you very much.
For this, for this funding, it could be... There it is. For this funding, how we're kind of being able to do this is the expansion of the evidence room because of AB 109 and the additional security. As far as a front door, one of our challenges with that is that as a public door, any modifications that we do to that become rather costly, because then it has to be ADI compliant up to today's standards. I fully agree, but that'd be a budget thing, because there are some substantial costs to just the door. Because this is an employee door, it could be a regular door with steps, and there's no special requirements on it. But I too agree that I would love to see some changes to the lobby.
With our budget coming up, it would be nice to have a business where we would know more of the financial situation, we'd be making that also a safety area.
That's absolutely something that we can look at and at least get a number for you folks to say, "This is what it's going to cost to do that."
Councilmember Sabatier?
Love the idea. I've seen you guys running out of that room, and yes, it could be a dangerous situation, especially with the pictures you showed us. It's obviously evident that we have a line of folks to run through. You can't run through that, and there goes the emergency. One quick question. I think one of the reasons why there's an issue with running out a door is that there's no buzzer. Will there be a buzzer on this door when you go out the employee-only service door to at least alert anybody that might be outside in that vicinity that somebody's coming out?
That's a good question. It was not in the plans. However, generally speaking, that auxiliary door will be for on-duty emergency personnel, myself, the chief, maybe even the detectives. They'll probably still use the front door coming in because they go to a slower pace. Now, obviously, if we're running out for an emergency to cover other officers or something, they'd probably be wise to use the other entrance. The officers be able to come in, will have a pass, so they don't have to sit there at the door trying to fling a key into a lock. It'll be something like a remote switch or something like that to be able to unlock the door, get in swiftly and quickly. I think that as far as a buzzer is concerned, we haven't considered that option, but that is what the monitors are for, so you can look up as you're going down the hallway. This will be a finished hallway adjacent to our evidence room, and you can look up at the monitor and see if there's somebody there at the door.
Okay, that works for me, because oftentimes I've seen, especially when the school bus drops the kids off, sometimes they'll come along the wall and go down Olympic. And second, you already went over it, I was just going to ask, I don't think we can demand it, but ask, just still use the normal door, because I think that public, meeting with the public, seeing the public, saying hi to the public is starting to get an important part of that communication. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Perdak?
Just last comment, based on Councilmember Overton's observations. I think with the ease in and out for emergency staff is fantastic. You definitely need that, should have had it years ago. Looking at the construction style of the building, being concrete exterior perimeter walls, moving doors can be difficult and costly. Not looking at anything immediate, but perhaps being able to secure that door with, again, another monitor, that staff, particularly 911 dispatchers, might be able to allow single persons or, you know, reporting parties into the window. That would afford them some security after hours at least, something to consider that way. And then if that emergency bum rush were to take place, they could buzz and actually speak with someone on an intercom or something like that, still maintain that perimeter security. Just another observation. And if there's no other comment, I'd like to entertain the ability to make a motion. And with that, I would like to suggest that we adopt resolution number 2015-11, resolution of the City Council for this... I'm sorry. Reading it by title only, thank you. A resolution of the City Council, City of Clear Lake authorizing award bid for an auxiliary employee entrance and expansion of the evidence storage room.
Second? A roll call vote, please. Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Perdak?
Aye.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino-Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Luzdilimpak?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Teamwork, I like that. Okay, item number 15. Verbal report on proposed grant application for Burn Valley School and Civic Center pedestrian sidewalk project, and request for allocation of matching funds from Series A bond funds in the amount not to exceed $200,000. So I will turn this over to the City Manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Staff has been working for the last couple weeks on a grant application for a project that would be a part of the anchor facilitation of the intersection here at Olympic and Litcher Drive as presented in the Litcher corridor plan. This is an ATP grant, an active transportation program grant. The project, as we've identified it at this point, appears to be in the range of $800,000 to $1 million. We've had extensive discussion, we've had meetings with ABC staff who's very supportive of this application. We're very optimistic that we will be successful in getting the grant, but it does require some matching funds, and the amount of match can secure additional points in the evaluation of those proposals when they are being evaluated. We're, we're very excited about the project, as indicated on the, on the agenda. It's called the Burns Valley School and Civic Center Pedestrian Sidewalk Project. We clearly have had some safety concerns that we want to address with this project, which gives us also additional projects. But as importantly, it ties together the other safety projects that we have recently done around Austin Park and Burns Valley School. So, the request this evening, because this is part of the Litcher Corridor Plan, is to get your authorization to expand up to $200,000 from the Series A bond monies to be able to match the grant proposal so that we can move forward with that project, assuming that we, that we get the grant for that. The application is due for supplemental on June 1st. So, we're on target to do that, we need to have determination if we've got that match money available. There is approximately $6 million in those bond funds, so there is sufficient money there to cover that cost.
Thank you.
Yay, sidewalk!
I'll open it, I'll open it to the public. Does public have anything to comment on this item? Item number 15?
Let's go on the two-minute, because that's where it started.
What? Somebody interrupted me, there's a crowd.
It started already.
My question is, what Bond A funds are we talking about?
These are known as Series A bond funds that were, that were issued through the former redevelopment agency. We've not been able to allocate those funds to projects because of the dissolution process. Excuse me, dissolution process? It was questionable through that process whether or not we were going to actually be able to retain and utilize those funds. We now are in a position, having gone through the dissolution process, to be able to allocate the funds. There will be some recommendations on the May 28th agenda regarding the rest of them. But that's where those monies come from. And they were issued for project construction, project implementation, acquisition, that type of thing.
And when was this done?
2006.
Is that the bond money that was taken out in regards to a loan?
No, that's a, you're talking about the $200,000 amount that...
I'm talking about the millions.
No, that's, that is a separate, if I understand what you're asking, that was a separate action. And the repayments back to the city was the $200,000 amount?
Wait a second, Joan. In 2005, there was two bonds taken out because the city was coming with funds, which was redevelopment money and the housing money to keep the city afloat. In turn, there had to be two bonds taken out, an A bond and a B bond. That money was to go to pay back the redevelopment fund. And then, part of it...
My sorry, time?
Joan, use that part of my time.
Well, I, I can respond to that.
But in turn, part of it was paid into the, to the housing fund.
Well, they're, they're finance rectable.
There were two series of bonds issued. There was the Series A and the Series B. Out of the Series A bonds, there were initial, the initial amount that was taken out was, I believe, close to $14 million. Above that, the original bonds that I think you're referring to, or wasn't here back then, were refunded or paid off from the Series A. So, and then the balance that was remaining has been about $6 million as well as referring to now.
So, you're stating that the city is no longer on a loan basis with these bonds? Because it was like $17 million that was taken on two bonds?
There were two, there were two series of bonds.
Yeah, A and B.
Correct, and the A, if I remember, and going from memory, if I remember correctly, it was about $14 million. The Series B was about $3 million.
Some odd change, but has the bonds been paid off?
No, we're in the process of paying them. They will be paid off.
That's...
I believe the last payment will be made on November 2030.
That's why I was asking about these current bonds. Are they a different set of money, or is this money that was in the bond by interest or something?
The funds we're talking about were the funds from the issuance of those bonds originally. That's the $6 million that we're talking about.
That you put back into the redevelopment fund at the time? You don't know if you were here. Joyce was the only one that was here at the time.
It was 2006. You were here, Joan, but Joyce...
And I just said that we've been in a month, it's 2006.
Anyone else have a comment from the public tonight on this item? So with that, I will close public comment, and Councilmember Perdak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is a very important item. It helps us to clean up our own house. We're looking at asking others within our community to clean their yards, do their abatements, get up to code, so to speak, and I just, and I think I speak you wrong, but we don't need to do this. So, I encourage a, a yes vote, thank you.
I definitely think we need to do this. This is a tremendous uplift, and I think more than, sorry, more than better house, good housekeeping. This is, this is something we, we ask of every business owner when they upgrade and they do things. So, if we have the chance and opportunity to do it, we need to do it. Councilmember Sabatier?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to entertain a motion. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the allocation of Series A, B funds for grant match for the Burns Valley School and Civic Center Pedestrian Sidewalk Project, not to exceed $200,000.
So good.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Councilmember Perdak?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino-Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Luz Delampay?
Moving on to item number 16. Discussion on possible council participation in the 2015 Lower Lake Days Parade scheduled for May 24th, 2015. I would like Councilmember Bruno to take this away, because he brought this to us.
So, every year we know the Lower Lake Parade occurs, a lot, a large amount of people go there. And Lower Lake is not exactly in a different state, a different county, it's a part of who we are. And I would love for the City of Clear Lake to show their support for this ongoing tradition in Lower Lake by being a part of the parade and having our own city council vehicle with us in it.
That sounds like fun. That sounds like a lot of fun, I love the parades around. Unfortunately, I am already booked in that parade in another capacity. And, I could get off and run down to the next one. And I think it is important for us to continue to create those bonds with the communities that surround us, the county of Lakeport and Lower Lake, and is bordering on us, and all of, how all the students come mingle within the high school. I think it is important to sort of erase those boundary lines and really be one community. So, if you guys are willing, I think I will wave at you, probably other clubs. I do think, though, since we are talking about parades, that we should consider a city council 4th of July parade, look. Being as it's on our very own Litcher Drive.
You need to stick to this, this is the July.
One parade at a time, folks, all this entertaining tonight, all the entertaining in the parade, this is just...
I know.
But we have to one parade at a time, one party at a time, so... Oh, we have pens up here, okay.
My only concern is, I think it's a grand idea, parades are grand. I don't know that we should have more than two council members in a vehicle. And I will either be working a fundraiser in the parks simultaneous to the parade, or out of town, so I would have to withdraw. Thank you, though.
And I will, if I'm not working. But I normally work from Saturday until mid-afternoon, so I haven't asked for that to change, but I will, but if it has changed, I would be more tempted to do it. If it hasn't changed, I would be more satisfied, I would be...
Sure, you're a definite maybe.
I'm a definite maybe? I'm absolutely a definite maybe. But if I'm working, I'm a definite no.
I, I have some serious business things that are coming up and that I don't know how much of our time this is going to take. So, I, I'm a maybe, I don't have a problem with that. I do kind of see what Councilmember Perdak would be describing, though, the perception to the public could be that we're up there just talking about all kinds of stuff that we probably should be talking about.
Question has come up, would that be a problem? I mean, I've seen it done in other areas, we've done it before here.
No, I mean, there's, there's an exception to the Brown Act in regard to recreation. You, you cannot talk about city business.
Right.
There is a perception issue there, but there is, there is very much an exception to the Act. You can go to elite conferences, go to other things, and something like that to support your communities is permitted, whether you think it looks bad, you don't want to do it, that's another story. Legally, it's a little bit...
That's good, because I would say, boy, because if not, we, we... I was the first council that was in the parade that just committed a Brown Act violation if that was true. So, it's like, I was kind of...
Just say sorry, the one. If, if permitting, I'm definitely participating.
So, we're, 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 two of us are a definite maybe, and we'll have to let me know, so I can...
And if it's possible, I would also like to send the invitation up to staff as well, since they also represent our city.
Since it'll be, it'll be like your outgoing vote, Joan.
There you go. I would imagine the chief will have a far ear, direct as lieutenant, to have a presence there.
It's pretty good to be there.
I haven't seen that before.
Is the police intentions on being there, or...
Volunteers do the traffic control. We have not been an active participant. There are several of us that are there because of family and friends and other non-professional involvement. And I eat for us's fundraising events.
We thank you for being there.
So then I guess the next question is, are we authorizing participation in the parade, no matter who can or cannot? We answer the, on the floor, that's what I think.
Yeah, and I think also, there's, I mean, if it's just one council member, I don't think we should, or, and no staff, then I don't think we should participate. But if there's some staff that will do it, and a council member that will do it, then we have, you know, four or five, you know, people that will represent the city, then that's great. And does the city have a banner to use in the parade?
No, we don't have a banner. There is no entry fee, donations are welcome, we're to the forum. Not having, not having a banner doesn't mean that we couldn't create a, sign a paper sign and locate, bring a banner.
I hate to be the guy that rains on the parade. Just looking at the cost, getting the vehicle ready and the overtime, I would have a problem with that. Volunteering is great, more department heads on salary would be great.
It would have to be volunteer.
It would have to be a volunteer.
I would definitely not support someone walking in to do that. The parade should be volunteering.
The rent salary's nice.
As the rent is.
So, with all those things in consideration...
Let's be specific. If we say, so let's be very specific, is that what you're going to ask us to do?
No, no, I was just going to say, since Councilmember Sabatier brought, brought this forward, and we've got some input now, and I think the consensus that it's okay to participate, that if he is willing to be the coordinator of vehicle, I, I don't know if you have the people identified, but coordinate those things if it happens.
I like your part. Yes, I, I, I will gladly volunteer to coordinate the effort and make sure that we have enough participation.
With that, I will move on to our city manager, your part.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, since the last council meeting, I did have a vacation, which was fantastic. I came back invigorated. Since that time, I've, I've worked on some economic development names. The County Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy document is up for edit, edit if you will. A few of you will remember, I think, that when this was done several years ago, the cities weren't included in the process. And that is, it's called the SEDS report, or the SEDS strategy. That SEDS strategy positions the county and the cities to be eligible for specified types of grant monies through the EDA. Cities weren't included, really, prior to that last rewrite. We are being enhanced, if you will, within the, within the new rewrite. Rebecca Southwood has been hired by the county to do this project. She is very energetic and has reached out to both the City of Prairie Lake and Lakeport for additional information that will beef up our presence within that document, and I think make it even more, make us even more competitive for those types of grants as they come along. So, I wanted to let you know that that's moving forward. I attended the Economic Development Group that has been meeting now for about 18 months. The group has gotten fairly large, and so the direction at this point is the larger group will meet on a quarterly basis, and there will be smaller focus groups. I did attend the first of the focus group meeting that includes the cities, the county, and a few other workforce and those types of agencies, so that, that it's not such a large group that we're not being able to accomplish something. With, again, the focus being on bringing economic development to the entire county, and specifically looking at creation of jobs. So, that, that is moving forward. Attended the breakfast this morning, I want to publicly compliment our finance director, Chris Becknell, and our public works director, Doug Heron, for the presentation that they made this morning. I thought it was excellent, and I think sets the stage for some additional presentations in the future, and certainly some good, solid background for potential opportunities in the future for funding of road projects. So, anyway, I thought it was well done. Our chaplain, Larry, from the Police Department, his church, which I believe is the Baptist Church, is tomorrow serving breakfast to the graduating seniors from the high school. I just want to let you know that, that will be at 8:30. I think they've done that the last several years, and I, I know he talked about it this morning at the breakfast, and I think is very enthusiastic about being part of the community in that way as well. And then finally, I just wanted to thank you for the action you took on the, the matching funds for the ATP grant. We have three staff members who have worked very hard, and continue to work very hard, to meet that June 1st deadline, and that's Doug Heron, Marco Calvaro, interim city engineer, and Adeline Brown. They have done a tremendous job in pulling together that information, and, and so I thank you for that support, for that, for that grant.
Councilmember Overton?
All right, I just have a few things. Met with the LAPCO director, and went through a little training process there on LAPCO. I will most likely be going to, approved by the board with our new budget that's coming up, to go to a conference in September, hopefully to kind of bring me up on speed and all of that, and also the main details in there. I met with several constituents this week on some of the complaints over there on the midway and the details, and probably all received emails. Hopefully, we can maybe get some direction to staff to maybe start checking on that a little bit more, find out what's going on over there. We have the youth fest coming up on the 23rd, the parade's on the 24th.
We have the youth fest coming up on the 23rd, the parade on the 24th, just to let everybody know. Memorial Weekend, we plan on having a great youth fest this year incorporating Adonis Howe, social service departments, I mean, like, and the resources going to be participating. The IPs will be participating. We're going to have a car show. So some different things that have not been there. This is our third annual year there. It is to have free activities for all the kids. So it's a community effort, community put on to bring families together and activities for the kids and give them a really nice day for trying Memorial Weekend, because as we all know, Clear Lake has nothing on Memorial Weekend, and I don't ever remember them, and I don't know how many years that they've had anything here on Memorial Weekend. So we're hoping that this will be a really good thing, we'll be able to become an annual thing on Memorial Weekend. So please, everybody come to it and enjoy the festivities, and we'll have food and activities and lots of fun, music, and people will just be booming there. And it's from 10 to 3 o'clock. And then I have a LACCO, as it was reported, meeting next week. Here at City Hall, please be there, because it is about our city this year, or this meeting.
Councilmember Spatia?
It seems I did nothing except for a whole lot on one day. On 5/13, I joined Councilmember Russ Perdop at the APC LTA meeting. We discussed current activities being done for the work on the Highway 20 and Highway 29. And then later on, there was a discussion about a trail between Middletown and the Twin Pines Casino as well. Later on, I got to the honor of having lunch with the city manager and superintendent of Knottville to discuss how the city and schools can work together. Later that afternoon, I also joined our public works director, Doug Heron, and Adeline Brown for a meeting on our June 6 cleanup. So again, I'm going to repeat, it says on June 6, we're going to meet at 8:00 a.m. in Austin Park. Come down so we can give you an orange vest and a picker and some garbage bags. And then our emphasis is going to be around the Pomo area and the avenues, and we plan on having a really good day and a good turnout that day. Some of the highlights of the past two weeks was on the 7th of May, the skate park reopened. Kids are absolutely happy, I guess is the word to use. They're really happy about the changes that made. Thank you Public Works, not just for doing your job, but going really deep inside the structures to make them exactly what they needed to be. They've been re-strengthened and repurposed for bikes since the original skate park was originally designed for skateboards. I really appreciate that and thank you to the council for approving for those monies. And then over the course of the last week, I've had the honor of helping the community bring in $950 in donations. And just as of yesterday, we ordered new backboards for the basketball courts in Austin Park. Those should be in by the end of May, so I'm really happy about that. I do have two items that I'd like to ask the council about. One, we talked about an ad hoc committee for the skate park, and I would like to scrap the idea of an ad hoc committee and ask the council if we can make a permanent subcommittee of the Parks and Rec Committee for the skate park, so that we do not lose sight that we need to fundraise and continuously take active support in that department.
I think a committee, because that's how it started and that's how the repairs actually got done was because there wasn't any action going on, and so I started a committee, and that's how it got back open in the first place, otherwise we probably wouldn't even have it. I think it is essential that we have a community that's willing to, to, and the council that's willing to keep this park open, and I think without that, I think the lot, I think what happens is it gets lost. And I think because this is something that's a constant theme, I think it might be something that we should put on the agenda for discussion.
Yeah, as long as we're talking about future agenda, this is going to sound like a discussion topic. I did bring it back to the agenda. I appreciate that.
So I guess, did we get the consensus on that? Yes.
I don't mind discussing it.
And also, another discussion I would like to have with the council. I feel that our communication with the public is either very personal and intimate with individuals, or we're talking about agenda items, talking business with those who are watching us on PEG TV or those who are in the audience right now. But I feel there are times where we're not able to discuss things other than the business that's on the agenda. And I would like to see us discuss about maybe creating something along the lines of a video newsletter, working with PEG TV, where two council members or one council member once a month communicates to the public in a more leisurely way than through business. And of course, that's just an idea. It can be completely changed as we discuss it.
I'm already on the takeboard. I'm already getting cameras. I'm good.
Well, I think he's always asking us, do we want it on an agenda to discuss something like that, or if that's something that he doesn't want to do.
I'm personally okay with the way I communicate with everybody.
I just, personally, I think that just when you start putting out, representing this council on air in a meeting, when questions, you know, things just get kind of twisted and it may not be that you're representing what everybody's thought is, I think that's just, I don't know what the status with that is.
I think, again, you're getting into discussion of it. I think we just want consensus of, do you want to have it on a future agenda to talk about it and get into the discussion of it?
I'd like to have a communication plan, maybe be more general with the discussion and say, can we set up a communication plan? Because I agree that we need to have a little bit more direct and intentional communications with the public and with the community, especially about certain things where it seems like we're hush-hush or we don't have an opinion. But we can, we can plan in advance to say, hey, here's how we're going to address this situation, or here's our yearly, annual, whatever we're going to do kind of thing. So anyways, that's what I'd like to do. Let's talk more broadly than that, but include that as well.
So is there consensus for that?
Consensus for better information up to the public, I'm totally.
I think if I, and I don't want to get into the discussion phase. We can certainly have that discussion, but I think with the website, there are things that will be coming that will address that.
I was hoping we could address it through the website.
So is this where we're going to talk about communication, agenda is a communication?
If I could recommend that maybe this is a workshop discussion where we talk about goals and objectives.
Thank you.
That works for me.
Great suggestion.
I'm definitely recording.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon?
Okay. This can be on the June 6 workshop, because I'll be there, or June 4th, they're going to be there. Let's see what I'm doing. Oh, I attended a sober grad committee meeting, and they will be doing their final fundraiser next Wednesday, May 20th, at DJ's Pizza, all you can eat pizza for $8 at the doors. Please stop by between 5 and 9 to support those graduates and their sober grad night activities. Also attended senior awards night, one of two. It was really heartening to be able to see these kids who have worked really hard and who have gone through some struggles, who have just grown up so much over the last four years of their lives, to be acknowledged for that growth and be acknowledged for their skills and their abilities, and also acknowledging themselves and their future plans. Each one got up as they got an award and told the audience what they had planned for the following year, where they were going to be going, what they were going to be studying. It was just a really nice way to acknowledge them. We also have graduations coming up, so please come out, support those kids, make lots of noise in the audience. May 27th will be the adult school graduation, I believe at 6:00 p.m. Don't quote me on that. May 28th will be Carlay High School graduation. And then May 29th will be Lower Lake High School graduation. All of those graduations will take place at Lower Lake High School. The one on Friday is at 7:30. That's as much as I know. So definitely come out, support the kids. I think it's awesome to watch them walk across that stage metaphorically from childhood into adulthood.
Councilmember Perdop?
Thank you. I did attend the ABC meeting yesterday with Councilmember Spatia. I wanted to reach out and thank two council members from Lakeport, Councilmember Matina and Councilmember Shield, who voted with us to provide the funding that we just voted on through an interest account that they had extra. And I really like the working relationships that we're seeing with the Lakeport City Council and seeing this as a single community, not two cities at opposite ends with opposite directions. I really like the direction, so I wanted to point that out. I also wanted to recognize a couple of different events where I was called upon by individuals in the community because of problems that they were having or perception of problems that they were having and a feeling that city staff was not helping them. I like to do a little research before I meet with folks, and I found that from the fire chief, Sepehda, to our city attorney, to our code enforcement officer, Lee Lambert, working with the folks on Laguna to help resolve some of the problems with the residents there. Kudos to you, and it looks as though the resolution may be coming quickly, I hope. I also wanted to thank Lieutenant Selly, had a problem with a family who had a perception that they were victimized, some property stolen, and they were feeling helpless and not being helped by the city. And he and Sergeant Joseph responded immediately out there and addressed those needs and made them feel heard, and that goes a long way. We only have one thing to give our community, and that's our service. And I think those events both represented very well what we do and how we care. So thank you all for that. Other than that, to expedite the meeting.
With that, I feel like I've been here forever, but I've been that long, I think. I did attend a loan committee meeting on Monday, May 4th, and then I did attend a evening meeting over dinner with our city manager, and then special position, and then I did meet, as Councilmember Perdop said, there's been some constituents concerned in the city about some things and some things that were close to their home. And we met with them to discuss it and give them some time to express their feelings to us, and again, thank you. Staff was on all of that very quickly already, before we even knew it pretty much. So that was great. I had a PEG board meeting Wednesday, last night, I'm sorry. My days roll together, guys. But anyways, and I'd like to lay out there that the PEG board does have two seats on the board available coming up, and it's the public seat and the educational seat. See, it's a little later tonight. I'm on it, though. So she put me on the spot this morning when I hadn't had my coffee yet, so. But anyway, so please come out and support your local access channel and get involved and come be part of it. It's fun. Been there for three years now. We've done wonderful, great things. With that, it is time to conclude the meeting. Thank you.